All right, it's six thirty. We've called the meeting to order. First order of business is public comment. If anybody has anything they'd like to say, come to the podium. Address your comments to the board and not to the public, and you have three minutes. No one? Item number two. Excuse me, that's number two. Number three, Dr. Collins?
Okay.
Yep, yeah, you're the main event.
Okay, well, my name is Robin Collins, and I teach water chemistry and water treatment and public health at the University of New Hampshire. And we've been working with DES to try to help them meet some of the drinking water needs for the citizens of New Hampshire. And New Hampshire being a granite state, there's a lot of radon in groundwater. And so we've been working on a process to save people money by not having to repump groundwater. I think there's a system called Bubble Up that the State Department of Environmental Services wished that there were some other alternatives. Bubble Up is when you pump from the well, it comes into a tank, open to the atmosphere. You air rate to strip the radon, and then you repump back into the house for water pressure. We're proposing to go straight from the well and keep it under pressure, adding air to strip out the radon. So therefore, saving one pump and making it, we estimated, at least half the price of current cost of Bubble Up. Bubble Up's around four to five thousand. We hope to get it around half of that. For a couple of times, actually three times, it's been on my house in Granger Drive, 21 Granger. And we've been going through an iteration of various air-to-water ratios at various pressures and at various flow rates to determine detention time. Unfortunately, my well caps out at about three gallons a minute when I try to operate against my house pressure of 30 PSI. So I talked to the state and asked, is there some wells nearby where the student and I can come out and test this at higher flow rates to us at six gallons a minute at pressures between 30 and 40 PSI, which is a typical household pressure, and at various flow rates? And we cap at six gallons a minute, four, two, and one gallon per minute. We take these samples and send them to the state for radon analysis, the state lab. And we anticipate maybe doing this a couple of hours each time we do this, probably a total of two different times, because the state cannot process all of the samples that we want to collect. So we have to do this at two other times. We develop our model. Our model is calculating Henry's law constant, which is, I don't know if you need to know that, but it's an equilibrium constant between water and air for radon stripping. So that way, we can design, depending upon the water source, how much percent removal they need to meet drinking water standards. Right now, the drinking water standards for water is 10,000 picocuries per liter. My house, if anyone's interested on Granger, is anywhere between 21 and 2,500. So it's not a problem, but it's radon, granite state, and we can still do our modeling. So I understand when I was at Sunny's, a gentleman, when I was eating breakfast, and I don't know how we got talking about radon, but he was on the board or something having to do with the Little River Park, and mentioned that they had a well here, there, and I think he said it was 300 feet deep, up to 44 gallons a minute. And so, wow, we thought that was pretty neat. And so I contacted Julie, and she, I don't know what I did right, but I'm the first on the board, so here I am. And I told her that for anyone who taps that same aquifer would be happy to share with anyone in that area. We do water treatment testing all the time. We're an independent third-party evaluator for select membrane companies, so I don't think you need it now, but we offer to do any coliform testing, because we do that all the time. So that's all I had. The system is fairly small and compact as you would, as we try to design this, such that it can go underneath the stairwell in the basement or something. And if this works well, I think this might be something you see more of for people who need to remove radon. Now, the problem with most radon around here, it's soil gas, so it's coming up through the basement. But when you take a shower and stuff, radon in the water can come out, and that's a concentrated type of radon just in the bathroom. Most of the vents are in the ceiling. Unfortunately, radon is heavier than air, so most of the radon will be near the floor. So if people are interested, if they want to vent the bathroom, they should vent from the floor and the ceiling again. But this is for focusing on drinking water. We don't think there would be a problem with six gallons a minute at maybe 20-minute runtime. Then we'll do four and go less. So I don't know if there's any particular questions, but we think we can do this fairly quickly since we've been all this experience at my house. And we've been putting the wastewater, it's not wastewater, but the water that we treat in the hose and just putting it in the back. So I imagine us doing the same thing. Are we could irrigate, it might be too early, but we're trying to make sure it won't be a nuisance if there's any excess water.
Any questions for Dr. Collins?
When? Well, the first thing we need to do is if the board approves, is to work with someone to have access to the water. We wanted to test the radon first. So before we do anything, we want to know, do you have radon in the water? And at 300 feet down the bedrock, we think you will. But I want to test that just to make sure before we go through and do all our experimental designs and send 300 samples, I'm sorry, 30-some samples to the state at $50 a pop or whatever it is. So what have you been, Steve, have you been involved in this?
I've just, I've just read, but, and listened to what you guys had to say. Julie asked, I don't have a problem with it. Open the door for him, so he can get in.
Mr. Brown, any questions for Dr. Collins?
No, I'm fine with it. What's the size of this thing? Because the pump house that we down here have down there is not very big.
We would probably keep it outside, like they did in my house. So it's just right outside the garage doors. We can keep it out. The height is maybe seven feet. We've kind of, we wanted to make sure that we can strip out the radon, and so we wanted to separate the air and the water to allow that to escape. But there's kind of equipment, the air release valves and so forth, that you can buy that can really shorten that. The pipe diameter is three. We decided to go with three inches, and it's maybe, the actual reactor is four feet. So three-inch diameter, four feet high, could have got by with three feet, but I want to make sure we reach equilibrium.
Any concern if it's outside? Because this is like a public space. Somebody can tweak and play with it, or is it just when you?
No, we'll set up and run it, then we'll leave, and then if we need to come back, we'll set it up again. So we won't leave anything behind.
Oh, okay.
My only question is-
That would fit inside the building.
What's that?
That size piece of equipment would fit inside the building, no problem.
Okay. Do you, I did, meant to ask, do you have an electrical outlet? Because for us to generate the air so we can control things, we'll have a compressor. To add that in the, if this becomes fruition and someone decides to market it, we may use a Venturi meter. So it's no mechanical part to get air into the water.
So I understand this is for a senior project, right?
It's for a master's thesis.
Master's thesis, then. It'd be kind of nice if we get a, Denise, if we can get a picture when this is going on. It'd be nice to put in the e-craft.
We'll take pictures for you, and we'll just give you guys a report, such that if anyone has a problem, you can show them the report.
I think it'd be nice to advertise the fact that the Little River Park just doesn't support just sports activities. It's nice if it supports research activities as well. So I'll give a little thing for the student doing it work and you as well, so it'll be nice.
We can take pictures and share that for them.
Great.
Any other questions?
No.
Julie?
No. No, just either coordinate with me, or actually, probably I'll just get you Steve Bullock's contact information, and you can just work with him directly.
Perfect.
Okay.
Works well for me.
All right.
Thank you all.
You good?
Thank you, Robin.
Do you need a question?
No, y'all, not it.
Y'all?
You all?
Y'all.
She's from New Jersey, too. I'm from Virginia. I'm used to it.
Must be southern New Jersey.
Southern New Jersey now that I've seen it. He's saying, "Water, water." He's going to test the water.
Water.
Water. Okay. Oh, should introduce myself, sorry. Item number four, Karen Rossi, planning and zoning administrator.
Good evening. So at the last month's zoning board meeting, there was an applicant for a variance for a bed and breakfast in a standalone building on her property. She lives in one building. So basically, she lives in the garage. They bought the property in the corner of Wally Falls Road and 150, Wally Falls Road Riverside Farm Drive. It's the old red farmhouse. And they opted to fix up the garage and live in the garage and not fix up the farmhouse. And we told them all along, that's fine, you can, she could only live in one of the buildings. You can't, on that piece of property, it's under four acres, you can't have two residents on the same piece of property. So that was fine. So then she proceeded to go to the zoning board last month for a variance to have a owner-occupied property bed and breakfast. And it was granted. She assured the board that she lived there and intended to live there and was, you know, also cautious of what went on in the neighborhood, just like everybody else was. When in fact, after the variance was granted, it was brought to my attention that she doesn't live there. She rents it out illegally on Airbnb now. So the zoning board cannot legally reverse their decision. Any aggrieved party can. So I'm asking the selectmen to be the aggrieved party, so the zoning board can rehear the case and possibly change their decision and not allow it. Because in my, I think if we're already having issues now with enforcement, what are we going to have down the road? My fear has always been that she was going to probably rent out both buildings long-term and not, it'd be an illegal activity all along.
But Karen, she, I tried to read up on this a little bit. She still says she does live there, does she not?
She says she lives there to the zoning board, but if you follow the ad on Airbnb, it says the owner lives nearby. And she's advertising the house, her home, for the Airbnb, which is illegal. She got the variance for the building that is in pretty rough shape to fix that. She's supposed to, she said she needed the variance to get a home loan, which I'm sure she does, to get the financing to rebuild the home, when in fact, she's not even living there now.
Okay. How do we know she's not living there?
She rented out Airbnb, and in the ad, which was in your packet, it states the owner lives down the street, or owner lives nearby.
Owner lives very close to the property, some other words, and then, though you will have full privacy while staying. She does not live in the residence.
And I've tried different dates to rent it, so to say, and it's been booked. And there's a review on there from February of somebody that lives in Nottingham that stayed there one night, or one weekend in February.
Okay. So this is a procedural thing, then?
Correct. The zoning board can't reverse their own decision, and aggrieved party has to, and the aggrieved party can be anybody, including the board's selectmen.
Karen, I have a question. The second paragraph of this letter you lost, the sign that says, this car sat was brought to Karen Rossi, planning his own administration. The last sentence says, this bed and breakfast in is in itself a violation of-
Correct. So she's currently advertising the house that she lives in as a bed and breakfast, which is a violation. She doesn't have any approvals for the house that she supposedly lives in. She only has approvals for the red farmhouse. She lives in the upstairs of the garage, and she's advertising that as a bed and breakfast, which in itself is illegal. So I already have the zoning enforcement action to take, and we haven't even-
All right.
So.
Any questions for Ms. Rossi?
Just one quick question. So let's just assume for a moment that we, that she is actually living in the other property. She still has to go to the planning board for the red house, correct?
Correct, yes. She has to meet with the fire chief and then go to the planning board.
Okay, thanks.
Any others?
Excuse me, I represent-
Up to the podium, please. Let's take your name and address.
My name is Gregory Nalk. I represent the Riverside Homeowners Association that abuts this property. And my, I do have a grievance on this in the fact that even in her literature, she advertises that the path along the lamprey is clear right up to Flag Hill, and you can go visit Flag Hill. And one of my neighbors just ran into their renters for this, this weekend on that path. That path is private. My insurance does not cover anyone outside of the homeowners. So I definitely have a grievance. Now, that could be taken up, I don't know if that's means to either start this action or not, but certainly we were taken by surprise to find out it was bed and breakfast. And I can ascertain that I go by there daily, twice a day, and there was no cars there.
Can I ask a question? You said it was private. Is it posted in any way as such?
It is, it is, but not from where they would be accessing it, which is through her property. And you'd get on, well onto our path before the first sign would be visible.
Okay.
It is posted. I plan to repost now on that path.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen?
And just to clarify, unfortunately, that's a civil matter. We don't get involved in the enforcement of that.
Is there any worth, if he was to show up at the ZBA, to talk about that to them?
So the town doesn't get involved in, no, that's a, that's a personal matter. The town does not get involved, the zoning board nor, that has nothing to do with, he was just mentioning it. It's coincidental. It has nothing to do with the approvals.
Anything else? I move to ask that the zoning board of appeals rehear the request for a variance granted on February 19th, 2020 for a property located at 154 Wally Falls Road. One of the stipulated conditions placed on the variance by the ZBA was that the owner must reside on the property at all times. The planning and zoning administrator has received evidence that the owner and Mortu Zou?
Mortu Zou, yes.
Mortu Zou does not live on the property, but instead is listening to her residents on Airbnb website. Do you have a second?
Sir?
In discussion. Others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do you want to sign that thing afterwards?
Oh, so you don't have to.
Thank you. Item number five, Steve Bullock, Public Works Administrator.
All right, so last time I was here, I gave you some numbers. You asked me to come back with the rest of them and are all of them, so that's what I've done. So the green would be shared costs, which in event would be, the green is what Madberry would pay and what we would not have to pay anymore. If you understand that. The red is in addition to what the 21 proposed was. So the printing would go from 1,500 to 2,000, because we add 500 onto it. The volunteer thanks that's on there, that was 150, Madberry would pay 50, so the budget doesn't change. It stays 150, but Madberry would pay the 50, we would pay 100. The green, the asterisk one, the dues and subscriptions one, is not a third of the 17, 28, because that includes the lamprey operating costs. And they would already be paying their portion of the lamprey operating costs, just as we would. So I didn't increase that. And then, in the waste disposal one, I figured out how much MSW they did and how much it would cost at 68, 50, which is what it would go to, it'd be 37, 252. And I based that off of what they did last year for tonnage. And where their tonnage was just about half of our current tonnage, every other line down, except for the hauling cost, I did half. The hauling cost is figured out at their tonnage divided by 14 for tons per can, and that's, that's a rough, like an average. Sometimes we get 12, sometimes we get 16. The rest of them, I don't, they don't have any numbers for anything they've done with construction and demo tires, any of that stuff. So all those are just based on half, like, what, because I had the solid number of half for their MSW, so I just did half of everything. They didn't do hazardous waste, because they pay their own hazardous waste day the same, they go to the same place we do. And then the closure costs they're paying anyway also. And their numbers are probably different than ours, because they put less trash to the ash, or the ash to the landfill.
Questions?
Couple of questions on the personnel pieces.
Yep.
Is that including the fringe benefit addition?
No. We haven't done any calculation for that. I mean, these are, obviously, these are all guesstimates at this point, to just kind of give everybody, both ourselves and Madberry, at least some idea as to what the costs would be. I also spoke with Tara, can't remember her last name.
Albert.
Thank you, Albert, at Department Environmental Services. And she pointed me in the direction of three different state statutes that might govern this, and so I've done some research into that. I've read those, highlighted these , and then parts. And then I also have a question into NHMA Legal. I just want to make sure that my interpretation of the statutes is, is accurate. Under 149M, it looks like Lee and Madberry could enter into, they're written agreement. They could take a number of different forms. I think it can be as simple as a one-page agreement. It certainly can get as complicated as setting up a whole solid waste district under 53B, but I don't think anybody wants to do that. Under 53A, which governs agreements between governmental units, it looks to me as if the governing body, so the selectmen, can reach this agreement with Madberry. But as you might imagine, there are various rules and regulations that govern the whole thing. DES would have to approve any agreement that we reach with Madberry, and the Attorney General's office would have to approve any agreement, or at least that's the way it looks to me. So, so, you know, I'm still waiting through the regulatory piece of this. As I think Steve mentioned to you at prior meeting, we have to, we would have to modify or get a new license, because we would be expanding our service area. And I don't know, one of my questions to NHMA is, is it as simple as we have a one-page agreement and we just say, this is what we think it's going to cost Madberry, pay us this money every year? I mean, that's about the simplest way we could do it. And I'm certainly aiming to do it as simple as possible, rather than having to set up some whole separate governing body, so.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, I need, I need a little bit of help. I'm sorry, I need a little bit of help understanding the shared, the additional, the red indicates additional.
Red indicates additional, so like electricity, obviously, I increased it a third, because it went by property, or not property, it went by mailing addresses. So Madberry has about a third of the mailing addresses is Lee, and that's how-
So that's additional cost to Lee?
No, the red is, that's what Madberry would pay, so just go on the TS electricity main, pay the first one, it's $8,000 for FY21 proposed. Lee would still pay 8,000. Madberry would add 2,666 to it.
Got you, okay.
Because we'd be running bailers more and everything else, because we'd be doing more.
Is that difficult to track each time? I mean, is it a lot of what I'll call additional bookkeeping work to keep up with who's paying what for what? Or is it easy to do? I mean, how do you calculate every day or every week or?
Well, I mean, we know what our costs are now.
Yeah.
So let's suppose we let Madberry in, and they're using the transfer station for six months, and we see that our electric bill went up by X.
Then we know I didn't do it enough. You know what I mean? It's, I think a lot of it's-
And they're going to come up and say, well, no, we don't know about this.
We don't, I mean, we don't know how this is going to work.
Yeah.
This is, this is new territory for us.
I understand, and for them. So that's why I'm concerned about just the bookkeeping and, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. LaCarson, anything you want?
Just, I assume that when we stop putting it together, there'll be a reevaluation phase, because as you said, this is the first time cut, the numbers might jump around, and you have the indication, what they were thinking, three-year, five-year?
They haven't really said. I think if it happens, it's probably going to be something they want to do permanent. I know that in our discussions, we've discovered some things, like with Dover. But my guess is Dover's trash bid came back a million dollars over last year's bid. So I would assume that Dover's going to up their price to what Madberry's currently paying to go there.
Didn't you tell me that Madberry's currently paying $6,000 or something like that?
Almost seven.
To Dover?
To Dover.
To be able to use their transfer station.
But that's not trash.
Right.
What is it?
Just bringing your recyclables there.
Oh.
That doesn't include MSW at all.
So I guess it's too hard to guess right now. Number, increase the number of cars that you would expect to run to the property?
I don't have that, because they're, right now, they're curbside, so you're going to get a lot of people that are not very happy, that all of a sudden, and they got to drive there. So it'd probably start off slow and then slowly go up, which is why I didn't put in this. But if it gets bad enough, you're going to have to open on Sunday for a little while, probably, and then obviously, that's going to increase the labor part of it.
That was one of my questions, in terms of, if you're having all those extra people, wouldn't you need more time? Because Saturday is busy, busy, busy. Tuesday or Thursday are okay, but that was my other question. The other thing I had a concern about is, these are, these are what it would cost us. I don't necessarily want to do this as a freebie.
Yeah, I know.
I'm nice and benevolent, but not that benevolent.
Well, that's what the green, green would be.
The green would be based on their usage. I don't see anything, like, like for instance, when we charge, using fire and police, we have a 25% surcharge. I would want something like that in place.
Well, we didn't, well, one of the things I'm trying to determine is exactly what we can charge them. I don't know that we're allowed to make money.
I'm not necessarily, then I'm not interested, then. Because I'm not going to do this just to be nice as a neighbor.
Well, I mean, it's, we're not expected to do it and have it cost us money.
Yeah, but I don't necessarily want to do it and just break even. We're wearing out our people, our facility, for what? I don't necessarily agree with that.
I don't know, someday we might need something for Madberry.
Okay.
You never can tell.
Yeah, you never can tell, but we'll probably all be dead by that time, but.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
The other question I had is, in terms of the, this is going to be new for Madberry people.
Yeah.
I don't see anything in there in terms of the education process. Is that something that they would take on in terms of educating their people, in terms of, now you're going to this facility, you have to separate, and all that kind of stuff? Or is that something that you're just, we just take on that responsibility to educate them?
I'd hope that the committee that is doing all this would take on some kind of role, and then obviously, we're going to have to do it onsite, too.
So there's a committee in Madberry that's, okay, all right.
Yeah, it's the committee that I've been going and talking to, the combined services- Yeah, it's the committee that I've been going and talking to, the Combined Services Committee. I went to one meeting.
As you mentioned before, this is going to be a sea change for them in terms of, I sit at home, put my trash out, it's all gone, now I have to put it in boxes, separate the strangles.
Rollinsford just did it. Did you see the article in the paper over the weekend?
No.
Rollinsford's a single stream.
Yeah.
They got hit with all the same cost and they're now separating everything at their transfer station.
And all the residents are happy?
They weren't when they first started.
They weren't at first, but they're making money.
Okay.
They even bought a bale, what, twenty-eight thousand dollars?
That's the one thing I would say is any recycling revenue just stays.
So what's the next step with this? Do you need something from us or how do?
Steve and I, he keeps meeting with Madbury or I'll meet with Madbury if they need to, and I'm just going to keep trying to drill down and figure out how we go forward on this.
They have a meeting Wednesday night, I think.
Does this, the swap, does this include the swap shop already loaded in that place?
They'd end up using it, but you know, give it more.
Barely got enough room.
And get more volunteers and more people taking stuff out of it.
Maybe they'll put some volunteers in.
So I mean, hopefully.
It'll be a good volunteer service.
The thing for me, the swap shop, you think it's a headache, but the thing is, any kind of time we can divert anything from MSW.
Of course.
Less we have to pay. So if somebody's coming to pick up something, I'd rather have them pick it up and take it home and.
So I gave, I gave tours of it, the NARA, I don't know, three weeks ago, and they got a tour of the swap shop. And the rule was when they stepped in, they had to take something with them when they left.
Well, I have to say that I was there on Saturday and the crew did a very good job looking through everything that you bring in. So they are scrutinizing what goes in there.
They're starting to.
Which is nice to say.
All right. Any other questions for Steve?
Yeah, let's proceed and see where we go.
So keep us updated in terms of your conversations with the Madbury committee then.
I just got a couple of other things that were on there, just so you keep you guys updated.
Twenty bucks.
That's all right. I put the paving bid out for paving this year because the budget for this year's paving was the same as last year, so whether the budget passed or not, I was going to have the same amount of money. So we put it out early this year hoping if we get it out early, we get a better price where there's fresh on it. And then, in the transfer station, we finally got the bailers and everything, the oil's changed in all of them, the heater's working, and the timers put on them to get them shut on and off. I found a quote that a private company could have done it for ten thousand six hundred dollars and we ended up doing it ourselves for about three. So we're making progress, slow, but we're making progress.
Well, you might have done better to leave your paving bid until later with oil dropping thirty percent today. That's a major part of it.
Yeah, I haven't even had a call yet for someone wanting to come look at the roads though, so. Yeah, things are dropping.
But roads are on tap, on tap for this time?
So the original roads that were on tap, we moved because all the roads that were supposed to be paved this year were all developments and they were in really good shape still. So we flip-flopped them and we're doing Mitchell Road, all the stepping stones. So stepping stones south and then stepping stones east and west and Tomb Lane.
Steve, you look tired.
Well.
When was the last time you got some rest?
Two o'clock this morning.
Two o'clock this morning.
Well, why are you so tired? No snow.
I know.
What's up?
I'm asleep.
People keep saying spring is here, and I said, no, Mother Nature is yet to raise her head.
Yeah.
So.
Steve, take care of yourself.
Try to. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I have number six, Julie, the town administrator.
So I think this was at the request of Chairman Budby. No, maybe we talked about it at the last meeting, sorry.
Let it on me, wherever it is.
Yeah, in any event, we, no, we had a discussion, that's right, it was at the last meeting, sorry. Wow. We had a discussion about minutes and our ongoing struggles and frustrations, particularly on the part of the board secretary, in order to keep our website up to date with the minutes of all the various boards, committees, and commissions, of which there are many, as you know. Some committees, boards, I'll just use the term committees, I know that's for everybody. Some committees are really good about it and we don't need to pester them, but some are not so good at it. Some are, if they're pestered, they get the minutes to us, some of them, we never see them out. For example, because I had to, I went looking today for the meeting minutes of the Recommission. I haven't, there haven't been meeting minutes since the August meeting. So I drafted, again, at the board's request, a memo that would go out, again, reminding them of this, urging them to do this correctly, and indicating that the board would consider a committee's ability to get minutes done on time when people are appointed to said committee. So I know what Mr. Budby thinks, unless he's changed his mind.
Never can tell these days.
About the memo.
Well, my issue is, one of the things, like Julie and I had a conversation about this, I would like that last, or I guess it's next to last paragraph, a little bit more strongly worded, but I think we need to decide what we want to do. The only thing we really have in terms of controlling these particular people doing their jobs is the reappointment process.
You're absolutely correct.
So I don't know where to go with this. I don't think it's our place to babysit these people. They take the oath when they sign up, well, they take an oath and they agree to abide by it, but part of the oath is doing their jobs. And if they don't do their jobs, we have town employees chasing after them to get them to do their jobs. So I'm not sure where to go with this other than saying, hey, if your committee is not, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing, I'm not going to reappoint you. And it could be one member of the committee that's, I'm game to do these minutes, but somebody's stopping, I do not know. I don't know.
What are you going to do, what are you going to do if it's an employee?
There's, we need to, these are people that are.
My understanding is, we have, you know, internal.
That's true.
That's true, that is true.
Is that right? And they're not turning in minutes. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
But the board has oversight over.
We have.
Employees, so.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, the rule is the rule is the rule.
Yeah. Well, I would be willing to apply it.
Uniform with all.
Yeah.
We have an opportunity there. I feel it's important that we put it, you know, that the select board has an opportunity, not just in this issue. If we feel that somebody is applying to a particular volunteer position, we don't feel that that person's going to work well in that position or doesn't fit the mandates of the board at that time, you don't have to appoint them to it. So I don't think this is an issue that we, you know, if we feel strongly, we have to have some mechanism to try to put some screws in. So I'm fine with it. It doesn't bother me whatsoever. I think we should move forward.
We okay with the meeting?
Yes, I'm fine.
One thing I would like to suggest is, and I don't know if I want to be a nasty person about this, but to force those particular groups that are not filing them on a regular basis, have us file ninety-one A requests for them to produce the minutes.
Oh, that'd be interesting.
So.
We can do that legally.
And it's not.
No, it's not.
And it's not everybody. There's only a certain bunch that aren't doing it. And it's a disservice to the public and it's a disservice to the town. They're not doing their jobs, so.
Just procedure.
Would you be amenable to us filing one of those? Can the town file one of those or does it have to be a person?
To the best of my understanding, any individual, whether they're a resident or not, can file a ninety-one A request. So in other words, you wouldn't even have to do it as a board, any one of you as a person could make a ninety-one A request. I could make a ninety-one A request.
She just fell into my trap.
Yeah, I've done this.
She fell into my trap.
I've done it.
The spider web.
No, I've done this when I've been completely frustrated with a particular committee in town. Consider this a ninety-one A request.
Absolutely.
So is the board amenable to us asking the town administrator to send to those particular committees and commissions that have not filled in their minutes or filed their minutes? Because they don't have to be approved, they just need to be draft form.
Right.
And let's see what that goes.
I think we've got to set the standard somewhere.
And we're not asking them anything that they didn't, they knew they had to do this, so.
We're well on our per, let's move forward.
Okay.
And we will distribute the memo.
Thank you.
Zipity-doo-dah.
On a tangentially related matter, so.
So that was a setup tangentially related matter?
Well, it's at that time of the year that we start looking at the memorandum of understanding that we have with the Oyster River Youth Association. Now, unlike maybe the past couple of years, I haven't heard from anybody about this.
Not even the Oyster River Youth?
No, not even Oyster River Youth. I haven't reached out to them, but, so, one of the things, though, that the board talked about was making some changes to the memorandum of understanding if we decide to move forward with it, that really puts the control and authority of the fields firmly with the Public Works Manager. That's not to say that he can't take input from anybody and everybody, but ultimately, I think you've got to have one person who's in charge of it. But other than that, I guess I don't really have any particular comments to it, other than, as I said, to just bring it to the board's attention that I haven't heard from anybody. That's why I went looking for the Recreation Commission minutes to see whether they have had any discussions about it. I did send an email to Larry Kinberg, the chair of that commission, this morning, this afternoon, to say, don't know if you've noticed, but it's on the agenda, I'm just, I don't know whether anybody's talking about it.
I did have two things.
Yeah.
Three F. It says weather-related cancellations are to be approved by ORYA, request for reimbursement is to make to the Recreation Commission.
Yeah, that was.
Can we change that to?
That was a language change or a request from the Recreation Commission, and I can't remember whether it was last year or the year before, and the board just agreed to put it in. To be very honest, I'm not sure that I ever entirely understood what it was, although I think that if someone signed up to use a field and paid to use a field and then it rained and wanted to get their money back because they couldn't use the field, I think that's what that is.
But why would they ask the Recommission? It would come to us anyways.
Because the Recreation Commission wanted it.
So I would like that changed back to Selectman's Office.
Okay.
And then for, I don't know, I think it's four F, this seemed to be a problem, and I'm not sure if it still is a problem, of them leaving their athletic goals off the field when they're not in use? And this is more of a question than, oh, yeah.
Yeah, again, this seemed to be a particular issue for the chair of the Recreation Commission.
Okay.
I, I don't recall ever hearing from anybody else that it was an issue. I think it was an issue in the opposite, in that ORYA would leave the goals there, people would want to show up and have a pickup soccer game and actually be able to use the goals. So I think the reason for getting them off the field was some concern that they would damage the field that they sat there.
Yeah. And the other thing is the date you'll fix, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Yes, I had that circle too, but I assume I'll just.
Yes, we change the dates every year.
I think we had that discussion, that the Recreation Commission is so focused on the activities and not the structural elements.
Correct.
Yeah.
So would the board like me to reach out to Oyster River Youth and see what their thoughts are this year?
Yes, please.
All right. All right, anything else?
Whichever changes, I think it covers it in terms of what you talked about under maintenance, the town, the highway department should be responsible generally. I don't know if anything else needs to be tweaked so that the idea that he's in charge of the fields or highway departments is in charge of the fields, not, okay. I don't know if there's any other place, because I haven't seen.
Okay. So I was actually tonight going to have Karen Rossi stay and we could both give a brief update on the coronavirus and Clay Lane, but I don't know whether you're aware, Ms. Rossi hurt her back over the weekend, so I know that she didn't want to have to stand at the podium any longer than she had to. So the fire chief, the police chief, the health officer.
Who's a health officer now?
Karen Rossi.
Correct.
And I met this afternoon for two reasons, well, and Steve Bullock, he was primarily there for the Clay Lane portion of the discussion. So every Monday, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services conducts a telephone conference about the coronavirus, similar to what they do when there's a snowstorm or rainstorm or hurricane. And even prior to these phone calls, I've been checking in with the fire chief and the health officer, and the state isn't telling us to do anything. In other words, exercise common sense, stay home if you're sick, don't go near sick people, and wash your hands. Still remains pretty much all of the advice that we've been given. Certainly the police and fire departments have different considerations and they've had meetings and they've talked to different agencies. So they are certainly well-prepared with the way that they approach, if they get a call and you stay six feet away and wear masks and all of that. There has been some information that's been given to us specific to the election, which we also passed on to all of the election officials. I had a conversation with Bambi Miller today, I had a conversation with Don Quibley today and essentially said this, that we've given you all the information the state has given us. Bill Stevens communicated with Marion Kelsey, who is the chair, the supervisor of the checklist, this weekend. He is going to be bringing over their additional cleaning supplies, what do you call them? You know, a little pop-up, the wipes.
The wipes, yeah.
Pop-up wipes. And so I guess that they're going to be extra diligent in cleaning the surfaces throughout tomorrow. Other than that, that's about all we have. If anyone suspects that they've been in contact with someone or exposed, stay home and call your health provider and/or call New Hampshire Health and Human Services. And that's, that remains all the advice that we have.
Is there still only two confirmed cases in the state now?
Two confirmed, two, whatever the term is for provisionally confirmed, I don't know if you know this, presumptive confirmed, thank you. The CDC, for reasons I still can't quite grasp, has to confirm all of the cases. So you test locally and then I think it goes to the CDC. One of the two is in Rocketham County, the other is Crafton County?
Correct.
Crafton County. Forty-seven people has a noontime phone call in the state, I think, have been tested.
Any concern in terms of, because when they come in, they take the little pen, do their thing, and they put it down.
I think to the extent it's possible, they're going to maybe try to keep wiping the pens down. My, my, my advice to anyone who is really concerned?
Take your own.
Bring your own pen, yeah, bring your own pen. I kept trying to get someone a pen today and she kept going, I'll have my own.
I'm just, I think the best thing that's going to happen is to swipe them down when they're, you know, if they have, if they have a problem reusing a pen, just tell them it's wiped down, or here's a wipe, wipe it down.
Or immediately after you vote, there are several bathrooms in the public safety complex, go wash your hands, which is still the number one piece of advice, wash your hands.
Is there any stipulation in terms of marking the ballots? Because they usually use those felt tip markers. Can you use a pen or what will pick up?
I think you can use a pen.
Because if somebody says, I want to use my own pen to mark the ballot, I don't.
No, I think anything that's.
I think anything that will fill it in and not tear the paper, which is probably why they use felt tip markers.
Probably, okay.
Yeah.
Our schedule?
We'll find out tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
We'll test one.
Mr. Brown's from seven till eleven, I'm from eleven till four thirty or something like that.
Maybe earlier, yeah.
And then you're here for?
Till it ends, yeah.
All right.
Clay Lane, to date, you may recall that the board authorized so far thirty-four thousand out of the state money.
Unanticipated, yeah.
Unanticipated revenue that came to us in October. Of the thirty-four thousand, I think that we've spent about ten thousand dollars thus far. We just got notification from Jones and Beach that the cost of the AOT, Alteration of Trade Permit, is going to be for, I want to say four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars, less than five thousand dollars. The planning board hearing was scheduled for March twelfth. Ms. Rossi is not sure that she's going to be able to get a quorum for that. So if she can't, she's gonna push that until the following week, and notify everybody to the extent that she can notify everybody.
Okay.
And that's about the update on Clay Lane.
Anything from the abutters?
Some of us have received a phone call from Mr. and/or Mrs. Jernigan. They are in the process of selling their house.
That's the yellow house?
It's the one who's not an actual abutter.
Yeah, it's the yellow house.
Yeah. When I spoke with Mr. Jernigan, he was upset about all eight acres being clear-cut. I told him that that wasn't true, which he didn't listen to me. The entire parcel's only seven acres, that's how I know they were not cutting all eight.
Yeah, I know.
I think the plan is that ultimately, three out of the seven acres will be cut, but that's over a period of years.
Yeah, it's the northern part.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else?
No.
I remember seven. Anybody want to remove anything, or you're good?
I'm good.
I move to accept the consent, agenda is presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And in terms of seven D, is that just because that antenna is, like, can reach us? Is that why we're getting notified?
I don't know. We get abutters notices, I mean, rain is a little more understandable, but I don't know.
Salem.
I don't know why we get one from Salem.
Yeah, I looked at that today, too. Let's say, oh, I'm an abutter. I guess they like to do things.
University sent out a notice just before I left, saying that when students go home, take your laptops, your books, your pads, everything. There's a possibility that you might not be coming back.
I mean, but I... Forever?
I don't know what it means, but, you know, obviously Rice University sent everybody home. They said that everything can be online, but let's... being online takes it. It's preparation for that. You just don't put a course online, otherwise it'll...
Right.
I don't know, some people say that, just put it online. Unless you're really good at it, you know what you're doing, you practice online, things, not so good. How do you take an engineering lab return and put it online?
Virtual reality, John.
Virtual.
And they can blow up the lab, and it doesn't really blow up anything, so...
I mean, how do you do labs? Can't do labs online.
No, you can't. Since we're doing electrocardiogram, electronseptilogram, electronmiregram, I need humans.
Let's take that comment out of context, John, and get yourself in trouble then.
Yeah, I guess.
People cheat.
In my life, I have to build their own amplifier, and they stick it on themselves. And that way, if they mess it up, that's their problem.
Why do they accidentally have it dial to eleven?
Well, it's called execution.
So, Mr. Brown, did you purposely refuse to sign these three? Or you just didn't like them, or...
That's no sweat. I guess you don't like those.
None goes on, so...
It only takes two signatures anyways. They go leave.
Yeah, but that takes away the fun of harassing Mr. Brown, you know? We wouldn't want to...
We're in good condition tonight, I tell you.
That joy.
We're in good condition tonight, we're picking up each other. Well, it'll be interesting to see which way the votes will go tomorrow, I'd be curious. See what happens.
Interested in the school one, too?
Yes, a lot of signs out, back roads, that's right, on the back roads. The back roads.
How's that?
We are.
I move to enter... What the heck is eight and nine? Eight and...
Eight and nine?
Oh, the nines shouldn't be there, yeah.
Okay. Write this down for Denise's review. Move to enter non-public session, RRC, and I don't want dash A, code three, rule number two, A and C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourse?
Yes.
Mr. Budby, yes. How's that? Number ten or number nine, depending on how you're looking at this. I move to seal the non-public meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Any discussion? No. Mr. Brown, are you in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye, yes.
Mr. LaCourse?
Aye.
Mr. Budby, yes. Motion passes. Anything on number eleven or number ten, and however ordering is? Nothing?
Things require.
Okay.
Order for Mark.
Alright. Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.